Good evening. We will call this meeting to order. It is just after seven on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, and this is the second regular city commission meeting for the city of Ormond Beach. We are in the commission chambers, and I hope you felt welcome this evening by our finance director, Kelly McGuire, and our police captain, Chris Ruse, who are our greeters. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, we have Cassidy Ritz, our recording secretary, city clerk, Colby Solento, Commissioner Dwight Selby from Zone One, our deputy mayor and Zone Two Commissioner, Troy Kent. To my left and your right, we have Commissioner Susan Persis from Zone Three, Commissioner Rob Littleton from Zone Four, city manager Joyce Shanahan, assistant city manager Claire Whitley, city attorney Randy Hayes, and for those of you listening online, Mayor Bill Partington. If you would, please silence your cellphones and rise for the invocation given by Pastor Neil Ganzell from Coquina Presbyterian Church. Neil Ganzell Jr. from Coquina Presbyterian Church. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for the city of Ormond Beach, a great gift that you've given to each one of those of us who live here. We pray tonight as these ladies and men work at the governance of this city that you would give them wisdom and patience, give them insight, Father, into the things which will continue to make this place beautiful, efficient, Father, economic, and in all the ways in which they conduct themselves, Lord, may they bring you a good reputation. We pray for the protection of our community and from all of the, all the things that hurt it. We thank you for the men and women of the police force and the fire department that take care of that. We thank you for the immense staff of very qualified people that labor under Ms. Shanahan's good guidance. We pray that in this coming year, this might be a city where the great wisdom you promised those who seek you will be the basis upon which this good city is governed well. We pray these things all, I pray these things all in the name of my Lord, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This time, if Brian Daley, our parade chairman, would come forward, and we're going to have the awards for the Home for the Holidays Parade.
Thank you, Mayor Partington. I'm here on behalf of the Ormond Beach Home for the Holidays Parade Committee to award our winners tonight for the 29th Annual Home for the Holidays Parade. We had almost 100 entries this year, with a little over 2,500 participants. If I could, I'd like to thank our sponsors first. Ritchie Automotive, The Money Pages, Hometown News, Ormond Pediatrics, The Mower Shop, S.R. Parrot, Realty Pros, Ormond Beach Main Street, Economy Electric, Orlando &amp; Sons Repair Center, and Slinger Lens. Our judges, Gail Burgess, Dillis Harris, and Rebecca Nave, and our committee, Brian Nave, Travis Sargent, Daryl Grobowski, Julia Trullo, Chris Masebo, Mike Demcek, Janie Ray, Dane Rydel, and Zach Stoner. With our city sponsors, Stephen Sibley, Sony Johnson, Robert Carolyn, and my favorite, Siobhan Daley. And now, the fun part, the award winners. We'll start with our Walker Division. In third place, and I'll tell you, if you are here, you can stand and wave, but as soon as I'm done, we'll all walk out to the atrium and get our photos taken, and you get your prizes. Third place in the Walker Division was Salty Church. Second place was Delta Five Fit Kids. They're here. And first place was Ormond Beach Pop Warner Football and Cheer. In our vehicles, the third place, and I know they're here, I just saw them, Eighteen Moving. Second place went to Walmart. And first place to Seven Up Snapple. And I know I say this every year, the floats, they get harder and harder to judge. The judges worked on this for a long time before they could come up with just three. But in third place, in the float division, Ormond Beach Elementary. In second place, Tamoka Elementary. And in first place, The Beach Bucket. And in continuing with our theme of elementary schools, the best of show this year goes to So, once Julie's done, if we could all walk out to the atrium, we're going to bring Julia up from Main Street now to give what used to be called the President's Cup, but we have a new name for it now.
Thanks so much, Brian. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to be a part of this tremendously fun and inspirational event that we do every year. The parade itself is just a joy to watch, and it's a wonderful way to spend an evening and to see all our friends and neighbors gathered together. We had the good fortune to have in our lives a gentleman named Reich Hundredmark for a long time. Reich passed away this year, and he was the ultimate in volunteerism. He just was always there to give of his time and expertise, and we thought it was really appropriate to rename this cup in his honor so that other people who volunteer their time and effort get to know him and get to share his name in this award. So, I am very pleased to announce that our Reich Hundredmark Award for the year goes Okay, everybody outside.
the Resilience Collaborative presented by Jennifer Rupert, who is the Regional Disaster Resilience Coordinator for the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. Jennifer?
A lot of words you had to get through before I made it.
That's right. Welcome.
Thank you very much for the invitation to come and present to you tonight. So, the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, we cover eight counties and 78 cities in our region, and over the last 15 years, the Planning Council has been involved in understanding impacts to sea level rise and resilience in all of our counties, but specifically along our coastal communities. Over a two-month, pardon me, over an 18-month period, the Regional Planning Council had won a DEP grant to consider the impacts of sea level rise and resilience and draft a plan that had about 150 different members of different agencies in the community to understand what a resilience action plan would look like for Brevard and Volusia Counties. Three important things really came out of that, out of that plan. Definition of resilience for the region was defined for the first time, a unified sea level rise curve was identified and decided upon, and then the third were actionable items that each community could use to understand how they can move forward with all of the state enacted, you know, peril of flood language and competent plan language, how to move that kind of information forward. That plan has had since been adopted by 11 different jurisdictions, and one of those action items was to put together or to expand the entire effort to the rest of the local governments in our region, because it was only, like I said, two counties that were involved in that program. At the same time, our Regional Planning Council was, which is made up of, you know, elected officials, we have League of Cities representatives, as well as agencies that sit on that board, were hearing and understanding different responses to shocks and stressors in our entire region. And based on all of those presentations and all the information that they heard, they really thought, this is a good thing to do. We need to expand that effort, including the wrap, into the rest of the, into the rest of the region. So, they did so. In September of 2018, they adopted unanimously a resolution saying, please, help us understand what this looks like, put together what, or give us a framework and a structure to how we can put together a collaborative in our, a resilience collaborative in our region. So, we did. The Planning Council immediately set up two committees. We have a smaller committee of the council subcommittee, which is an elected official group that really drives that program. We have a steering committee that meets every month, or that met every month, to define what that structure and what that framework looked like. According to that initial resolution, the steering committee was to be made up of different disciplines, which is exactly what we did. We looked at experts from around the state, but mostly focused in our region, from emergency management, health and equity, economic people, energy people, so a myriad of different disciplines, and brought them all to the table to understand what resilience means within their, within their particular discipline. So, they defined, under this resilience umbrella, our framework will be as follows. We were going to focus on people, places, and prosperity, and that was really to reflect a lot of the work that was already occurring in the region. We didn't need to recreate the wheel. There's plenty of information and data out there for us to grow and amplify those efforts. People is really focused on the health and equity of our people that live in this region. The places is our built infrastructure and our natural environment, and the prosperity is the economic resilience of our area. Our council subcommittee was adamant about including, we needed to reduce our carbon emissions and reduce our risks and vulnerabilities in our region while we're increasing our sustainability efforts at the same time. So, that's what was decided. That steering committee took that framework and developed a memorandum of understanding that really laid out all of those different pillars, and it also explained why the region was important, and it really tried to push the idea of working together for greater collective impact. So, the MOU requests a couple of things. We don't want to stand up committees, just to stand up committees. We want to make sure we're creating productive connectivity, so we're standing up technical advisory committees to produce documentation. We are going to eventually get to a space where we can produce a regional resilience action plan that will cover all of the region, not just our coastal communities, have a regional legislative strategy, so if one community is, is addressing impacts in a particular way, the rest of the region can also help and develop that legislative strategy and work towards the same goal. Community involvement in an annual summit is our two more things that the MOU calls for. To date, our Regional Planning Council Board formalized the collaborative in May of 2019. We have about 30 partners that have come to the table. I think of significant interest is the Volusia League of Cities has endorsed the collaborative as something that they are very interested in seeing move forward. So, the call to action is just the consideration of the MOU eventually, and when it's important to you, and how you can utilize the collaborative in increasing your capabilities and capacities as a public agency. The Regional Planning Council is here to help you all do that, and to engage as a partner in defining how these technical advisory committees are going to be moving items forward. Just as a side note, since we're continuing our move forward, our technical advisory committees have been defined as, again, product-based, so we're developing a regional risk and vulnerability committee that has already stood up and met for the first time. We're going to do a regional greenhouse gas inventory. We're doing an infrastructure assessment, which has also been scheduled. We're going to look at doing an engagement and academy development to kind of bring everyone along on this trajectory and what this means for our local communities. We have an economic resilience committee that's going to stand up, and as well as a committee that's going to be focused on health and equity. And with that, I will complete my presentation and happy to accept any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions? I know resilience is the, the new buzzword and the wave of the future, and frankly, a lot of dollars in funding are going to follow the resiliency action plans that, that are coming forward. So, thank you for that presentation, and Joyce, anything else we need to do with that?
Mr. Mayor, if the commission is interested, then we can bring forward an item to consider and approve the MOU from the East Central Florida Regional Resiliency Action Plan, and participate in that process if you would like.
Okay.
Give me some direction on that.
I am at least interested in seeing the MOU. If anybody else is, we can take a look at it and then maybe see if there's interest in bringing it back for, as a future agenda item.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we move to audience remarks. We'll hear from those of you who have signed a card to speak about any item which is not on the printed agenda for this meeting. The city commission has adopted a three-minute time limit policy for each speaker, and tonight we start with Jim Cameron. I didn't pronounce that right.
Good evening. I'm Jim Cameron, Senior Vice President, Government Relations, Daytona Regional Chamber, and I wanted to commend Jennifer on that presentation, just, I was going to say, from last meeting, though, Mary Williams, she was asking about that. I mean, she had shown a lot of interest, you know, I think, in that same topic, which she was here tonight. Anyhow, that said, first of all, I wanted to thank y'all for joining us up there for Volusia Days at the Capitol, though, I mean, I can't remember when I had as much fun up there. Setting those meetings and stuff. But no, I mean, seriously, appreciate y'all's participation, and especially going around seeing those House and Senate members, because that, that is critical, getting that message up there, and I'm sure y'all are going up there probably, again, I mean, sometime or another, and all, but there are several issues that are on the books, I mean, that we need to stay on top of, though. One I wanted to bring it to you today is, we talked about before, is that, Mayor, last year, y'all talked about a residential house that had 200 people there one night, three-fourths of your, of your, I mean, police departments there, vacation rental units, that came up today. House Bill 1011 by Representative Fisher. There are 25 people that spoke again today, and it still passed. So, that's moving, and then the Senate bill, 1128 by Senator Diaz, that's moving as well. So, look, we're with you guys as it relates to home rule, but I mean, we feel that it should be regulated here. We, you know, we're, we agree with the idea that vacation rental units should exist, but we would like to see them regulated here at the city and county level, though, because they're talking about this being done by, by the Department of Business and Professional Regulation Hotel Motel Division, and they just, somebody was saying in the hearings today, they just do not have the manpower, the, you know, the staff up there to regulate all of these units. So, we want to see a balanced playing field as it relates to our hotels and all, so. But again, thank y'all for being up there with us last week.
Thank you, Jim. And thank you for all your hard work setting that up. Next is Terry Mercer.
Hi.
How are you?
My name is Terry Mercer. I live at 31 Dix Avenue. I wrote to all of you about a week ago stating my distress with a possible parking lot at the church lot at 56 North Beach Street. In the letter, I stated that there were about 505 public parking spots. I didn't at the time list out the actual parking lots, but I wanted to let you know how filled they were last Saturday night around 7:00 PM. So, right behind the church right now at 56 North Beach Street is a public parking lot. Looks like you're putting a, whoops, a sidewalk in, which is great. There's 35 parking spots there, not counting the nine attached to Anderson Price. It had 15 spots in use. The lot at Bailey's River Bridge has 19 with not one in use. Across the street in Casson Park, there's nine in the front, not in where they're doing all the construction, but on the outside, not one was in use. The library has 182 parking spots, not counting the 15, not counting the ones that are used for 15-minute parking, which I think at night after five, that should be opened. Nor did I count the spaces marked City Vehicles. Only the first two rows in the library are used out of the 182 parking spots. The school parking lot had one in use. In front of the police station was five cars, and I think that's a two-hour parking, which I think that should be looked at also to maybe, after a certain hour, let that be open to all. In the lot next to the police station with 56 parking spaces, there was five cars, and one was the hearse that said, "Stop texting." That used to be right over here. Across the street behind the chamber, every parking spot was taken. So, and there, and there's 41 there, and that's not counting the lot that's attached to it, because I think that's private, I'm not sure. So, on the north side of Granada, there are, they are being used. On the south side, there are tons available, and I do not believe we need more parking spaces. I think we need better information about where the parking spaces are, and they were all public. I didn't count any behind any restaurants, any stores, nothing. All of these public parking spaces are in with a five-minute walk, and I understand the people on New Britain and Lincoln have parking problems. I think the police need to enforce that and then show the people where they need to park. Personally, I love all the restaurants and shops, but I just don't think it's our taxpayers' problems to supply parking for everybody, and Mayor Partington asked for input, and that's my input, and thank you for all you do, and happy 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Barb, Barbara Sandberg, 578 Riverside Drive, and I'm going to probably read this quickly, because you've heard most of this before. I love fluoride. I love fluoride. I have a fluoride rinse and fluoride toothpaste, but if I read the warnings, it says, keep out of reach of children. If swallowed, seek medication, medical, excuse me, medical help or call poison control immediately. Don't use on children under six. Do not, this one says, do not use more than four weeks unless recommended by your dentist. And you've heard all this before. Harvard study confirms fluoride reduces IQ in children. Fluoride is said to be a neurotoxin. Fluoride is no longer, I learned this right here in, in this room. Fluoride is no longer put in medications for osteoporosis because it increases the risk of fracture, fractures. The internal question is, did she fall and break her hip, or did the hip break and she fell? Fluoride collects in growing bones, especially growth plates like the hips. Fluoride may cause skeletal fluorosis, can't say it, but, and it can build up in the bones, leading to weakness of bones and fractures. Fluoride causes dental fluorosis, and that, everybody knows, even the dentists agree on that. It collects in the teeth, causing permanent staining and pitting. But where does it collect that you don't see? Studies with rats had a higher expected cases of osteosarcoma, a type of bone cancer. Of course, fluoride is used in rat poisoning, so that's not a surprise. The American Cancer Society advises those concerned with exposure to fluoride in drinking water to drink bottled water. Some of my friends who can afford it even buy bottled water for their pets. The American Cancer Society also advises people with wells to have their wells checked if they, if they don't have city water. Okay. So, even if you don't believe all that, all these studies that show fluoride damages your health, especially your thyroid, think about bottle-fed babies. They're ingesting over the safe limit. Is there a safe limit? Why add more plastic bottles to our environment? Why risk the health of those handling this dangerous substance who work in our water plant? Sure, they wear hazmat suits, but accidents happen, and accidents do happen to the hazmat trucks when they bring it to our water plants, and they have accidents. If you look on the computer, you can see some of these horrible accidents. Not often, but they do, but the, and they pollute the roads as they drive in these huge trucks.
Barbara, your time has expired, but thank you so much.
My point was to run right up. Okay.
Thank you so much. Jim Schultz is next.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard Drive. This could be deja vu all over again, you know, guys and gals. You know, the reality is, I'm a big First Amendment guy, because that's about free speech, and the reality is, our government is censoring free speech, or at least asking that free speech be censored. Adam Schiff, I mentioned that before, asked all four of the big tech companies, well, actually requested very strongly in a long letter, that they censor free speech. In other words, non-government policy on health issues like vaccination and fluoridation and all those other bugaboos not be searchable if they were against government policy. That doesn't sound like free speech. That sounds like 1984 Animal Farm. Sounds like peace is war, and war is peace, and crap is good. Well, I'm tired of the crap. The reality is, informed consent cannot exist with both sides of any health issue being known. Guess why they executed the war criminals in World War II for experimenting and killing people and doing horrific experiments? It wasn't because they did the horrific experiments. It was the foundation of it was, there wasn't informed consent. Gee, we're being deprived of that now, so you can't make an informed consent without that. And let me hit the fluoridation issue now. 1983 Surgeon General report was done by nine professionals, and they gave the data to the surgeon general. That data was altered and never appeared in public. It would have halted fluoridation, oops, because they said that fluoridation at two parts per million would cause dental fluorosis. No kidding, it does at one part. It does at .7, except they said it would be not a cosmetic effect, but a medical effect, and under the Delaney Law, you cannot put a chemical in the water that causes a medical effect. It's illegal. There was so much pressure to not do that, that C. Edward Coop effect. It's illegal. There was so much pressure to not do that, that C. Edward Coop altered all of the results of the study. You never found out. Why? Policy is determined by politics and huge amounts of money. And North and South Carolina had huge levels of fluoride in the water on the coastal areas. They didn't want to have to take it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And last but not least is Douglas Kenny.
Douglas Kenny, 13 Silk Oaks Drive. Real short, what's the status on the septic-to-sewer scientific testing? Has an RFP been produced? If it hadn't, when will it? And I think there should be general knowledge to the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Douglas. Next, we move to approval of the minutes. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review, as well as being posted to the city's websites. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? These are the January 7, 2020 Regular City Commission Meeting Minutes. Hearing none, just need a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, and we'll show those passed unanimously and move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Does anyone wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items? If not, we will move to 8A, and I will open the public hearings and ask the city clerk to read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance number 2019-43, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map to incorporate the provisions of the first amended North US Highway 1 inter-local service boundary agreement, ISBA, between the city of Ormond Beach and the county of Volusia, providing for the transmittal of copies of the notice and amendment to the state reviewing agencies, the county of Volusia, and any other local government or governmental agency requesting a copy, providing for public hearings, providing for conflicting ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2019-43, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards. It is a second reading. Just need a motion and a second for discussion.
I move approval of ordinance number 2019-43.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And 8B.
Ordinance number 2019-44, an ordinance amending the future land use element, the intergovernmental coordination and the transportation element of the comprehensive plan by incorporating the provisions of the first amended North US Highway 1 inter-local service boundary agreement, ISBA, between the city of Ormond Beach and the county of Volusia, providing for transmitting copies of the notice and amendment to the state reviewing agencies, the county of Volusia, and any other local government or governmental agency requesting a copy, providing for public hearings, providing for conflicting ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2019-44, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I do not have any cards.
Sub-move.
Second.
Any discussion? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we move on to 8C.
Ordinance number 2020-01, an ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the official zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 3.11 acres located at 263 South Nova Road, Volusia County Parcel Number 4221-00-02-0101, from B8 Commercial to PBD Plan Business Development, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2020-01, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards on this, but I will ask Planning Director Stephen Spraker to speak on this item.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Spraker. I'm with the City Planning Department. The project site is at 263 South Nova Road. It's at the intersection of Furnery Trail and Nova Road with Whispering Oaks subdivision behind it. There are two actions that are being sought, and I'm presenting both items C and D together, so that all flows together. The two actions that are seeking is to rezone the property from B8 Commercial to Plan Business Development. With that rezoning, they're seeking improvement of a development order. Development order is seeking two specific actions. One is for the building height of the structure to be 32.33 feet, and the very top of the parapet walls and corners to be 42 feet. They are also seeking to reduce the number of parking spaces for the storage facility based on Institute of Traffic Engineers, ITE parking generation requirements. This is the zoning map for the area. The red shows the B8 zoning district across the street where the Dunkin' Donuts, that zone, Plan Business Development. And then there is residential behind all the commercial along Nova Road. So, that's how the zoning was set up for this area. The B8 zoning district is a general zoning district. It allows a variety of uses. Uses, I know that's small. Uses include retail, office, medical office, restaurants. So, there's a wide variety of uses. In the consideration of this project, traffic was one of the key points we looked at. The climate-controlled storage facility is expected to generate 154 average daily trips based on that Institute of Traffic Engineering. Other uses such as retail could generate 854 trips. Fast food with retail could also generate more trips. So, this uses a very low trip generator. The project itself is shown on the screen. The large area is the building. Around the site, the green area is a natural preservation area. So, the residential would be over here with a large preservation area here, then the retention pond with planted live oak and red maple trees provide screening, and then you would have the wall. The south side of the parcel is not proposed for development. It'll be left as it is today. And the next slide shows some of the dimensions. From the residential area, on the north side is 135 feet to the property line, 164 feet on the south end of the building. Along Furnery Trail, there's a 47-foot setback, and then 140 feet to Nova Road, which, because of the angle, goes down to, I think, about 90 feet right here, and then 45 feet from the property to the north. The building itself is proposed, a three-story building, 94,921 square feet with 780 storage units. Some of the key aspects of the project are the natural preservation. Our land development code requires 15% natural preservation. They're at 32% with the site plan design. Each of the landscape buffers are increased. They use that as part of their public benefits, which is required under Plan Business Development. There's natural area. The thought process is, there's an existing wall here abutting the residential. There's a large area of natural area, and then there's, again, planting of trees to provide the screening and buffering to the property. The project is required to save 12 specimen trees. There are 33 specimen trees proposed to be saved. At the planning board, one of the key issues was the building height. There were six residents who spoke on the item. We asked the applicant to do an exhibit to show exactly what's going on with the building height. The 42 feet is at the top of basically these corners and these designed parapets. The parapet that's screening the elevator and some rooftop equipment is shown at 38 feet, and then the actual finished wall, the top of the wall is at 32 feet. So, it varies in size, but for our code reference, the height is a maximum of 42 linear feet. So, this is the side facing Furnery Trail, and this would be the side facing the residential rear property line, and then going around the building. This would be the side facing Nova Road, again, with the corner elements at 42, the parapet at 38, and then the top of the building at 32. The site design concept for this project was to bring the building in and up to allow that preservation of natural area. Their project could be, if the commission doesn't feel this is appropriate, it could go out. So, basically, instead of having three stories, you could go out into the areas, because there is additional areas here that could be developed. Land Development Code requires a 20-foot buffer and a 30-foot building setback. So, it's kind of a choice of which design is most appropriate. The second aspect of what they're specifically asking for is a reduction in the parking. They're requesting to go to 14 parking spaces. We used, we looked around the country, and we looked at some of the other storage facilities. We also went to the Institute of Traffic Engineers, who basically recommended .14 per unit. So, we are recommending approval of that parking waiver. I'm not going to read all this, but within your staff report, there are a list of public benefits, primarily dealing with landscaping. The project sign will only be on the building. There won't be on the site. So, there's a number of project benefits. The planning board did recommend a vote four to one. There was much discussion of the building height and the compatibility with the residential neighborhood. They did recommend approval four to one. Staff is also recommending approval as outlined in your staff report. And there was an email from Ms. Lori Bennett that I would think was sent to you today, because she couldn't be here. She wanted me to mention that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. I don't know if everybody received that email, but she was in favor of the project as being one of the least intense uses that could go there. Any other questions for Stephen?
I do have one, Mayor.
Commissioner Littleton.
Stephen, there is, on the map, there's the northeast point, the far northeast point of the building, let's say. There's a property on Quail Run, right at basically where the natural buffer would end in the northeast. So, yes. In other maps, there's a hose bib type thing there. On other specs, there's a hose thing over there, which is generally where her property line is. Do we know the distance between that northeast point of the building and, yeah, her property line, which would be basically the farthest right edge of the orange at the top?
We haven't done a diagonal. It's 135 feet to straight back. If you do it at an angle, it might be just a little bit more than 135. And again, that's, that corner, they're not proposing any clearing in that area. And there's also an existing wall along the Whispering Oaks first unit.
Thank you.
And Stephen, was the, the code would allow a 20-foot buffer, and they have a 67-foot buffer? Was that my understanding? Along the back there, along the east side?
Correct. And it comes out a little more than that along this area here. 64 is basically at the Stormwater Retention Pond site.
So, over three and a half, almost, almost three and a half times the buffer, more than what the code requires.
Yes, sir.
Do you know how tall the CVS building is?
It's approximately 30 feet.
30 feet tall. What about where Halifax Urgent Care is there on Granada in the bank? Do you know how tall that?
Not, I know it's a two-story. I would imagine, again, it's around 30 feet once you get both floors in there.
Okay. But staff's recommending, I mean, that was my only concern, was the height. Staff doesn't have a problem with that?
It's a balancing act. So, if you, if you want them, if the desire is to save trees and provide that natural area, then basically the height is necessary. If there's a belief that the height is too great, then the commission should really deny it, and then that would cause the building to expand. And I think the applicant has a pretty good exhibit of what would happen if he did a two-story across that same land area.
Thank you. Any other questions for Stephen? Just need a motion and a second for discussion purposes.
I move for approval.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Sure. Yes. I'd like to say, I attended the planning board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I've met with some residents that are on Quail Run and part of the HOA in the village. And I did that yesterday, and as I drove, after I met with them, I drove around to Furnery and sort of parked on the side and walked around the property. Okay, and I'm up in the air. All right. And then, as I went to make the right turn off of Furnery, this is 4 o'clock, you know, it's a little busy traffic-wise. And I thought, oh my, if B8 goes here with 10 times the amount of traffic, it's going to be bad. A low-traffic generator is what we want there. We know what's going to be built here, and as a commissioner, I can't roll the dice and allow something that has nine to 10 times the traffic generation to go there. So, that's how I'm looking at it. I support the measure.
Commissioner Persis.
I drove over there, I guess it was a couple, I don't know, 10 days ago, and I thought the same thing as Commissioner Littleton. This is like the least bothersome for, that's Furnery, people that live on Furnery, because if we get a fast-food restaurant or anything where people are going to be in and out, we could have some kind of, you know, outdoors music or something that would really bother people. I just think this, it might not be my first choice of what would go there, but I think it's going to be the least distracted to the people around those streets. So, I'm in favor of it also.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mayor. I support the project. I think it's a really good-looking building. I think the fact that they went up instead of out is really good for the environment. The setbacks are crazy huge, you know, I mean, that's awesome. There's one historic tree on the property, and they're saving that tree. They're planting, I mean, what is it, 238, there'll be 238 trees, I think, when it's all done. They're adding 30-some-odd trees. This is, it's commercial property. And, you know, honestly, one of the things that I thought about was that generally, there's a buffer between commercial and residential, usually multifamily or some other commercial use that's a little less intense. Unfortunately, the depth, the residential starts so close to our main northwest commercial corridor, Nova Road, that there is not the ability to have a less intense, say, multifamily apartments before you get to the houses, single-family houses. And so, for this applicant to come along and provide all these other considerations, I think is fantastic. And by the way, the traffic generation is like teeny. You'll probably never even see a car go in or out of the place. Well, I suspect the applicant doesn't want to hear that, but we will hardly notice as we drive up and down Nova Road. The place will fill up relatively quickly, I'm sure, and I think it'll be, it's, I'm confident it'll be, and I think it's a really good-looking building. And then, one final thing I just want to mention is that it's interesting, the actual structural roof of the building is at 32 feet, and yet it takes another 10 feet to create the really good-looking building, okay? And what I mean by that is, those are the parapets that stand up above the structural roof of the building that hide things like air conditioning units and the elevator tower and so forth. And we have a, you know, citywide, we have a 75-foot height limit, height limit. I'm sorry, I always accidentally throw an H on the end of height, height, height limit. And so, really, in effect, if you use the same sort of analogy, we have a 65-foot height limit for our buildings, which, you know, maybe is five floors, really, by the time you do a nice first floor, and get 12 or 14 feet on each floor above that. That's just a little aside. Anyway, and also, the other comment I had was parking. I think it's interesting, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Spraker, but they had to go to a PBD in order to reduce the parking, right? Okay. So, that causes me to say, we should look at our code. If ITE, you know, is it the International Traffic, whatever, says that we don't need that much parking for this kind of use, I recommend that we look at all of our uses so that somebody doesn't have to go to a PBD. That in our code, in B8, that if that's their use, they can build it with, you know, with less parking. So, with all that being said, I support this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Before we vote, I'll just read, paraphrase Lori Bennett's letter, which I sent to the city manager to include in the record for tonight, but says, "Dear Mayor Partington, as a longtime resident of Furnery Trail and a survivor of the, quote, 'expert med,' unquote, fiasco years ago, I would just like to say that this new development of a three-story building with low traffic is in our best interest." building with low traffic is in our best interest. Also, I would like to give kudos to Mike Woods of Cobb Coal for listening to our concerns and apparently addressing as many as possible, if not all. This development is leaving as small a footprint on the property as possible while leaving as much of the natural vegetation and trees as possible. In addition, they are building the actual facility as far from our property line as possible. This is all very much appreciated." She goes on to explain, her other neighbors agree with her, and, and that's essentially the letter which was submitted into the record. So with that, if there's no other questions, we will call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now we'll move on to 8D.
Ordinance number 2020-02, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a planned business development to be known as Nova Road Climate Controlled Storage, authorizing the construction of a three-story climate-controlled storage facility consisting of approximately 94,921 square feet with 780 storage units, together with associated site improvements, to be located at 263 South Nova Road, Volusia County parcel number 4221-00-02-0101, authorizing a building height of 32.33 feet for the primary roof-bearing wall and 42 feet for the parapet walls and cornice, authorizing the use of the Institute of Traffic Engineers, ITE, parking generation requirements, establishing conditions and expirations of approval, providing for recordation, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2020-02, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards. Stephen, I think your remarks from C apply to D as well. The only card I have is from the applicant. Are you okay, Michael, or did you want to add anything for D?
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? First, we handled the zoning, that's what we just did. Now we're moving on to the development order, which is what's in front of us now. And I just need a motion and a second for discussion purposes.
I move approval of ordinance number 2020-02.
Second.
Any further discussion? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we move to 8E.
Ordinance number 2020-03, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan to clarify the city's annexation policies related to utility connections outside the city's municipal boundaries, providing for the transmission of copies of the notice and amendment to the state reviewing agencies, the county of Volusia, and any other local government or governmental agency requesting a copy, providing for public hearings, providing for conflicting ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2020-03, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. And I'll ask our planning director, Stephen Spraker, to speak with us about this item as well.
Good evening. This is a comprehensive plan amendment, so it's changing the text of the future land use element, specifically policy 1.5.14. The commission passed a resolution, 2019-184, declaring its policy on annexation, and this is trying to implement changes to the comprehensive plan. The general utility policy is to require annexation or annexation agreement. There are existing exceptions, such as the North Peninsula Water District and the Hunters Ridge, Flagler County DRI service area. This is a comprehensive plan amendment. It starts with the city commission. It would then be transmitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity, state agencies, Volusia County Growth Management Commission. And then, once we have their input, we'll bring it back to the commission on March 17th. On March 3rd, our intention is to bring you the land development code and code ordinances. So all the, all the documents will say the same thing regarding our annexation policy. The planning board did recommend approval seven to zero. They were very interested in the overall water policy, not just the changing of the annexation. A key point to remember are these policies that you already have. What this does is bring them all together in one place and be as crystal clear as we can be of what the city commission directed us to do through the resolution. Staff is recommending approval, and here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Stephen? Thank you, Stephen. I don't have any cards on 8E, just need a motion and a second.
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, it's good work. I appreciate the staff working hard to clarify what has been a longstanding policy, that, that we, this city commission, would not seek annexation of the North Peninsula of Orman by the Sea without the residents of Orman by the Sea desiring it. So that's what we're doing tonight.
Good deal. Anyone else? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8F.
Ordinance number 2020-04, an ordinance amending the utilities element and recreation and open space element of the comprehensive plan regarding the use of two parcels of city-owned land at the intersection of Airport Road and West Granada Boulevard, providing for the transmission of copies of the notice and amendment to the state reviewing agencies, the county of Volusia, and any other local government or governmental agency requesting a copy, providing for public hearings, providing for conflicting ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2020-04, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. And again, planning director, Stephen Spraker.
This is another comprehensive plan amendment. It's dealing with two properties that the city owns at the intersection of Airport Road and West Granada Boulevard. The goal of the amendment is to strengthen some existing policies that are in the Hunters Ridge Development Regional Impact, and that was also part of the park and recreation master plan of how the 38 acres on the recreation site would be used as a passive recreation park. The planning, the amendment cycle follows the same as the last amendment. It'll go to the state agencies, likely come back to the city commission on March 17th. The planning board did recommend approval seven to zero, and staff has also recommended approval of the two amendments.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Stephen, you sent us a package through the city manager of these two parcels of land, and then also the piece on Old Timoca, the strip that was included in that package. And I just wondered, what was that, why was that included?
That information was included because we've had some prior discussions.
That's what I'm talking about here.
The property owner wanted us to consider swapping some property. So that's, that's why that was included. And we're not, we advise that currently staff is not interested in any kind of property swap at this time.
This piece.
I don't see it in the agenda.
No, 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 this was sent out separate.
Right, and I think the city manager basically went for the discussions that have been had with representatives from Flagler County.
So it's not, it's not related?
Correct, correct. I think that's an alternative site, if, if that is to be considered.
You taking comments, though?
Sure.
Okay, so I understand that these uses are the result of litigation between the city and the developer. That's correct, isn't it, Mr. Hayes?
Well, I'll try to summarize 30 years of the history on this in about, about three minutes. These parcels are part of a development order that was issued by the state of Florida through litigation in 1990. As part of that litigation and, and the, the development order that was issued, Orman Beach obtained a fee title to these properties for the designated uses, at a time to be determined by the city. Of course, this is 30, 30 years ago. Early in, after the development, in the years after the development, these properties were actually part of the comp plan, and they were removed from the comp plan. And a good way to remember that is, as time goes by, staff changes hands, and, and then what may appear to be a present need at one point, not another time, so I think it got removed. And so we're putting it back into the comp plan so that there's some consistency between the comp plan and the development order that was issued back in 1990. So that's kind of the summary of it. I'll certainly be happy to have more discussions with you if, if you would like to about that.
Thank you, Randy. Anything else for?
Yeah, so, I mean, I just, I just, the northwest corner of Route 40 and Airport Road, you know, public utilities, I would, that, I think, I can see that someday being a fairly significant commercial corner. And I, you know, in my, in my mind, I would love to see the extension of Hand Avenue tee into Route 40 at that point, at Airport Road. That, to me, would be, would be really, really good for Orman Beach, whether or not that ever happens or not, you know, who knows? But, so therefore, putting a water plant or a waste, a water, wastewater recovery plant or whatever at that location does not seem like a good use. But that's not really what's on the table tonight. What's on the table tonight is to add this to the comp plan so we don't lose track of it. And based on the litigation, that's how it was, that's what the state determined, this land, which was given to the city of Orman Beach for free. And then also, I understand there's some strings attached, the developer.
Yeah, that's not actually.
Facilities there would have.
Yeah, that's not actually, let, let me kind of straighten out a little bit. Actually, there was consideration given for this land. Prior to the litigation, the developers approached the city and Flagler County with the concept of developing this area as a development of regional, regional impact. Orman Beach denied the application. It was appealed, the applicants appealed it to the state of Florida, that's where you ended up into the litigation. As part of that process that preceded the litigation and into the litigation, the city obtained other parcels of property for utility purposes. During the course of the litigation, the hearing officer recommended, and which was incorporated into the final development order issued by the state, that those properties that the city had, the city would convey back to the applicants in, in exchange as consideration for that. The applicants, in turn, would convey four or five different other parcels, these two being two, two of those. The other parcels have been, have been undergone some, some use. These two have not, primarily because of the remoteness and the location at the time. But the historical records do indicate that there was some pretty good discussion between city staff and the developers about utilization of those properties. The way the development order is structured is such that the city will make use of those properties when the city determines it is the appropriate time to do that, for the uses that have already been designated as part of that development, that state-issue development order. So that's, that's kind of what you have, and so what's being presented, again, to summarize, is we're just putting those properties back into the comp plan so that we, we haven't, we have a footprint for everybody in the future to look back to. I can tell you that one of the things that is very challenging for staff is to reach back into history to find all of the documents, to write summaries and reports. And so part of what we're trying to do is to circle all of this up, package it in a way that years from now, somebody looking back will understand what was done and, and why. And so this is part of that process here.
Any other questions or comments? I just need a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And with that, we will close the public hearings and move to reports, suggestions, and requests. And start with city manager, Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a busy start to the new year. I wanted to let you know that I met with Dr. Anne Chortel of the St. John's River Water Management District last Thursday. Been trying to schedule a meeting with her since before Christmas, but she's a busy lady. We talked to her about various data and information that St. John's has for septic-to-sewer information, and what additional studies perhaps St. John's can help us do in answer to Mr. McKinney. We have not yet issued an RFP for any kind of analysis. We're waiting to review some of the information that we get from Dr. Chortel. We're also working with our other folks that provide us input, like our consulting engineers, to help us develop and identify other water quality initiatives that we can focus on in the meantime. So we've been working on that. Let's see. Staff has also attended the Florida League of Cities Clean Water, the Water Symposium in Orlando in November. And we're continuing to be engaged on the, on the statewide level with septic and the clean water initiative. So we're working with our lobbyists in Tallahassee on, on those issues and continuing to stay informed. And, so I'm happy to talk with you in more detail about my meeting with Dr. Chortel. I think she's, Dr. Chortel, and so that we can, you know, evaluate where we're going. But right now, there's no independent analysis. We haven't written the RFP yet, so we're still working on that process. We'll review what we get from the Florida Department, St. John's River Water Management District, and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection before we move forward. And that's all about I have at this point in time.
Thank you, Joyce. Any questions for the city manager? We'll move on to assistant city manager, Claire Whitley.
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. And city attorney, Randy Hayes.
No, sir. Thank you very much.
All right. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Wanted to begin by introducing to you all Dr. Victoria Fallberg, who is here. Victoria, would you please stand up? Yeah, great. She is the recently hired executive director for the First Step Shelter Board.
Hi. It's really nice to be here. I want to thank you all for your resolution to support us. And if you have any questions for me, I can just tell you, as of yesterday, we were up to 39 residents. I don't know what the count was today, because we did do more intakes, but I left before it was finished. And things are running really smoothly. But if you have any other more specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. And, and just want to say, I'm really glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Yeah, and as of Friday, the ratio was, it was, well, on Friday, there were 33 residents. So within just a few days, it's picked up pretty significantly. 20 men and 13 women, and eight of those 33 have jobs, are already employed, okay? And then also, the shelter had secured two Section 8 housing vouchers for, so we can move some of those folks into permanent housing. So I think there's some serious progress. We have a board meeting Monday, and we will, at the shelter itself, and we will be examining our options on the safe zone, on the creation of the safe zone. So that's a big, big issue. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then, you know, I attended with Commissioner Littleton Volusia Days through Jim Cameron and the Daytona Beach Chamber, and I had the opportunity to meet with Senator Debbie Mayfield, who is the key sponsor of Senate Bill 712, which is a comprehensive clean water bill. And it addresses many issues, including septic-to-sewer and the whole, the entire regulation of septic systems in the state of Florida. And I think you may have read in the paper recently that there's, the, the governor is pushing teacher salaries, and the legislature seems to sort of favor water quality. So it'll be interesting to see how that all shakes out over time. But there's a, there's a little, little bit, a little bit of a power, power struggle there. We were fortunate enough to be up there while NASCAR was doing their kickoff for Speed Weeks, their pre-Speed Weeks kickoff. So at the governor's mansion, there was a little reception, and Lisa France was there, and the president of the, of, of the, well, I guess it's of NASCAR, was there also. And, and of course, we got to, you know, see the governor and his kids, and, you know, it was great. And then, the final thing I just wanted to mention was that, I guess it was two... it was two agenda packages ago, we got the Western Service Area Master Plan update, which is in draft form at this point. And I started reading that over the weekend. And, you know, this is 150, 175 pages. And it is not just for the western portion of the city because it deals with reused water, which is citywide and so forth. And in my opinion, this warrants a workshop because there are a lot of recommendations in here that have multiple prongs to them. And I think that we should have the opportunity to look at this and have it, you know, have it presented to us by staff, by the experts on our team who know, you know, what this all says. So, and with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. Deputy Mayor Kent?
Thank you. Just a couple items this evening. First of all, had an opportunity this past weekend, and actually, all the commission was there as well. The Orman Yacht Club had a great event and fundraiser. They do a wonderful job, and, you know, it's a great landmark in our community. And not just for our community, but, you know, it's known statewide. Really good event. Across the street, Ms. Shanahan, excellent progress on the dock and break wall. Every day, I drive by and take a peek, and looks like they are on schedule. So, nice work there. This past weekend, it looks like we had a, one of our three annual kids' fishing tournaments at Central Park. So, let's get the word out, you know, for anybody that's an Orman Beach resident, their children, 12 and under. They participate for free. It is a wonderful opportunity to learn about the flora and fauna in our community and have a great morning of fishing. So, look into that if you're interested. Coffee with Commissioner Kent will happen on Monday, February 3rd, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. I have been hosting this at my home, 130 Magnolia Drive. I can't even believe it, going on 17 years now. So, it's from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. We talk about anything that you want to talk about. But, I host that and would love to hear your ideas. Also, coming up, we have our first Friday movie on the Halifax, right over the bridge at Rockefeller Gardens. That will be Friday, February 7th. Another wonderful, wholesome, family, fun-filled evening that's free to you, that your city puts on for you once a month, to go and watch a movie under the stars on the beautiful Rockefeller Gardens. So, I hope you also are able to get out and enjoy that nice event. With that, thank you much. Have a good evening.
Commissioner Persis?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I had the opportunity, I guess it was two weeks ago, to attend the Orman Garage ribbon cutting. And that was, so it's officially open by the chamber. And if you go back there, please make sure you see the mural. It's just about finished. It's an amazing mural. It just makes you, you feel like you're stepping back in time a little bit when you see that mural. It's just, it's really, really nice. And I think it really adds a lot to our city. So, that was a great event put on by the chamber. And the mayor and I also had the opportunity to go to Orman Beach Elementary last week and attend their Arbor Day celebration. The city planted another tree there. They have a nice little line of trees now that the city's donated. And we had a great speaker, a woman, and I don't recall her name right this minute, but she's an expert on trees and animals that live in trees. And she gave a great presentation to the students about that. And then they had, and then that kind of went into a little lesson, and then they did a craft and activity. So, it was really a very nice event for those students, and I really believe they learned a lot. I attended Monday the Martin Luther King Breakfast. Commissioner Selby was also there. And it was just a fabulous event, as always. And, you know, it makes you kind of remember, you know, where you were, and, you know, if you were around when, you know, Dr. Martin Luther King was shot. It was a horrible day. But, I think we've come a long way since then, and we have a lot further to go. But, it is a great event to attend. If you've never been, I encourage you to go. Lastly, I just want to say, I'm the liaison between the commission and Orman Main Street. And we had a meeting yesterday, and one of the things that came up was the church. And I know we voted, the commission voted, that we were going to look at, you know, selling what was valuable inside and then moving ahead to, you know, to, you know, to take it down and look at building a community center. And basically, from what I got from the Orman Main Street, that's what, that is what they want to do. They don't want it to take a long time. The comment was kick the can, let's not kick the can down the road, and maybe wait and wait and wait on this. Let's get something done. And there were a couple of people that were concerned about even tearing it down, but I think that's the decision of the commission already. That's what we're doing. But, we had a nice talk about it. So, I just wanted to let everyone know what was discussed about it. And I do think, you know, it's clear, it's clearly we need a place where we can have events where we don't have to go out of the city of Orman Beach. We need to have it right here in our own beautiful city and have something that's really spectacular right there on that property. And so, with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Littleton?
Thank you, Mayor. To touch on Volusia Days, you go up there and you lobby senators and representatives, and it's very informative. And you meet a lot of people, and you learn a lot of things. One of the things we discovered at a Florida League of Cities meeting that the mayor and I attended was that 1/10 of 1% of the Florida state budget goes to water projects. And that equates to about $90 million. And $90 million seems like a lot of money, but the big state of Florida, it's not a lot of money. So, that was interesting. And, you know, I don't know where any other money could come from. I'm not advocating for it. But, probably jumping that up about five times as much would be appropriate. I also wanted to thank Terry Mercer for actually going out and doing the groundwork and actually, I mean, she actually counted cars and parking spaces, I mean, on a Saturday night. And I appreciate it because knowing that, that affects my decisions going forward about the use of that property going forward. I wanted to end with the fact that Josie Stumpf was Volusia Teacher of the Year. And happenstance, she lives in Zone 4 of Orman Beach. And, Mayor, I'm asking if we could recognize her at our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Yep. And thank you, Commissioner Littleton. Commissioner Persis had one more thing.
Yeah, I forgot to say, at the Orman Main Street meeting, they also said they do not, emphatically do not want a parking lot there. That was, came out very clear. I don't think I said that. So, I wanted to make sure I got that out.
Good deal. Short-term rentals, we don't call them vacation rentals because nobody's against vacations. Everybody supports vacations. But, what we are against is having short-term rentals to crowds of people in residential neighborhoods. And most of the legislators up there in Tallahassee seem to understand that. And they also understand that the majority of Floridians, all the polls show, want that decision made at the local level, how to allow that, where to allow that, if to allow that. And so, that's encouraging, but we have to stay vigilant on that issue. We're lucky as a city because our staff did such a great job protecting us that we're grandfathered right now. Most of the proposed legislation still protects that, but that could always change with a strike-all amendment at any committee meeting. So, we have to be on top of it and paying attention. I think the, talking to Senator Wright while we were up there, he gets the home rule issue. He was talking to a woman regarding vacation rentals, short-term rentals, and she thought it was okay to have them. And he said, "Well, where do you live?" And she said, and he's like, "Well, you know, why are you asking me that?" And he said, "Well, I'd like to buy the house next door to you." And she said, "Oh, why do you want to do that?" He said, "Well, I want to put a vacation rental there." And she said, "You wouldn't." And he said, "Exactly." So, it's easy to say that you're for something like that until it's happening right next door to you. And that's the point. And Senator Wright tells that story and seems to get that. So, it's a constant battle. It comes up every year. The industry is not going to give up. They've brought it back year after year after year. And there have been some train wrecks in those committee rooms where the industry was defeated. And so, they continue to work and work and work to find a way to make it happen. And so, it's something that we have to balance, and we have to be able to regulate. There's appropriate places for it. And so, we'll continue to stay on top of that item. The yacht club in Orman Beach, so many people have a framed picture or a framed painting of that club in their homes across the nation. It is, it represents community. It represents friendships. It represents historic preservation. And the current group that's in there has done a fantastic job, piece by piece, of raising the money needed to stabilize it, preserve it, and try to keep it as historically accurate as possible. Built in 1907, opened in 1908, the amount of hurricanes that that building has survived is mind-boggling, but it still survives to this day, and it's an important part of Orman Beach history. So, it was a great, great event, as always, and a nice dinner. After that dinner, I left to go to the Hard Rock Hotel Motel in Daytona Beach. And there was a fundraiser there for the Seabreeze Chorus, who has been honored with the opportunity to perform at Carnegie Hall in New York. And so, they have a GoFundMe page set up to assist them getting there. And we've been working hard to help them raise monies. I think the total cost for the trip is around $38,000. Of course, the students pay a good chunk of that, but there's some students that can't afford, can't afford to pay that. But, just wanted to mention that GoFundMe page. I think there was an article in The Observer, which was wonderful, and also in the news journal. So, the community always rises to the challenge to make sure those kind of special experiences for our young people happen. Many of you heard the news today about Lucky's. Talk about a shock to the system. That was, I think, the employees may have found out mid-morning. I heard about it just before noon and have been on the phone all afternoon since that time. Looks like every store in Florida is closing, except for some reason, which we don't know, the West Melbourne store. And February 12th is, some of the stores, I understood, closed immediately. The Orman Beach store will be open until February 12th. And it's a result from what I'm told of Kroger National Chain pulling their venture capital, which is in the multi-millions of dollars, from the Lucky's chain. It's not a result of anything regarding this particular store because I believe this was a profitable and high-performing store for the chain. But, when they make that decision at that level to shut down distribution everywhere, just because one or two stores may be doing fantastic, they're not going to keep all 20 stores open. They shut down the entire distribution chain, again, except for West Melbourne, which we don't know why. So, that, if that happens, and I say if because you never know, anything in the venture capital world can happen between now and February 12th, if that happens, it creates a huge challenge for us. And I feel for our beachside residents who are so grateful to finally have a decent store on that corner after seven years of the old food line sitting empty. So, I'm hopeful that it doesn't actually come to fruition. But, if it does, that'll be a challenge that I know our staff is ready to meet. They've already begun reaching out, working, trying to find ways to make that not a reality. And I think, really, every challenge, within every challenge, there's opportunity. And so, have an optimistic outlook overall. The store, again, was profitable, well-received by the community. And I think ultimately, there will be something there that works, works for our city, and hopefully for longer than nine or 10 months. So, that's all I'll say about that at this time. More to come. And with that, make sure I covered everything, we will say good night.